I'll call the meeting to order for Legislative Session 2018-23, October 16, 2018. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer, please believe this, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. In this day and time, we declare the day of the resurrection, and we declare our trespasses against Jesus. And there is no temptation, but deliverance to people. The highest kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. The Lord is with us, and with the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from October 2, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion of corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 18 in reference to the Stormwater Management.
Sub move.
Second.
Sub move.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 18 in reference to surplus and sale of Barron Creek Road.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion of corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 18, 2018 in reference to the Economic Impact Scholarship.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion of corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 18 in reference to amendments to the Fiscal Year 19 through 23 Capital Improvement Program.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. At this time in the agenda, I have a special presentation. We have a proclamation for the Becker Morgan Group Incorporated in recognition of their 35 years of service to the community. And gentlemen, I have a proclamation to want to read. We will go right over to the podium if you don't mind.
If you just take your names before I start, and then for the public.
Ron Morgan.
Brad Hastings.
We'll give you another one too, as soon as I finish with this part. This is a proclamation for the Becker Morgan Group. 35 years in business, which is absolutely fantastic. And not only 35 years in business, but a very reputable company. We have members of three Chamber of Commerces here, and I know that each one of them are probably very familiar with Becker Morgan and what they've done in their communities as well. Not only that, but across the, not only in the local community, but across the state in Delaware. I'm assuming even further than that. So I'll let you pick a couple comments after I get through this, okay? The proclamation reads as such: Whereas Becker Morgan Group is a full-service design firm specializing in architecture, engineering, surveying, land planning, and interior design, and uses a holistic approach that encompasses the entire design process from concept to occupancy, and whereas since their founding in 1983, Becker Morgan Group has been committed to responsive customer service, design excellence, and problem solving utilizing creative yet functional design. And whereas with an emphasis on client interaction, Becker Morgan Group has built many ongoing relationships resulting in numerous repeat clients, and whereas winning numerous awards over the years, Becker Morgan Group attributes this to the relationships formed with their clients, enabling their creativity and affording them the opportunity to provide design solutions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council congratulates Becker Morgan Group as they celebrate 35 years of business, and commends them for being a leader in the architectural industry. Done the 16th day of October, 2018. Okay?
Hold on, we're going to pitch your first. Okay?
Thank you so much. It's certainly an honor to be recognized in your hometown. I was born in Salisbury and lived here my entire life, and so very happy to see classmates here in the audience. We're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish and look forward to another 35 years. So thank you.
Good morning. The only thing I have this morning for this meeting, this part, is public hearing on Legislative Bill 2018-10, which is an act to repeal the current Article III and Article V of Chapter 70 of the Wycomico County Code. That would be Sections 70-7 through 70-16, entitled Tourism Board and Youth and Civic Center Commission, respectively. This was introduced on September 18 of this year by the county president, pardon me, by the council president, at the request of the county executive. And it's a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Legislative Bill 2018-10. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this bill, come to the podium, please, state your name and county of residence and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill 2018-10. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2018-10.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor will begin with Councilman Kilmer.
Aye.
Vice President Dodd.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Matt Holloway.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2018-10 has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mrs. Hurley, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on the surplus and sale of 9765 Barron Creek Road, Mardella Springs, Maryland. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times and posted on the county's website stating that a public hearing will be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. I'd also like to mention that according to Chapter 22 of the county code, council is to hold a public hearing today, and then at its next legislative session, you'll have the opportunity to vote on the surplus and sale of the property. So today is step one, which is the public hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on the surplus and sale of 9765 Barron Creek Road in Mardella Springs. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name and your county of residence and your concern. This concludes the public hearing on the surplus and sale of 9765 Barron Creek Road. Mrs. Hurley?
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 112, 2018, to amend the Fiscal Year's 2014-2018 Capital Improvement Program and capital budget to transfer $500,000 from project number 15104 Lower River DMP Site to project number 15105 Middle River DMP Site, and to rename project number 15105 to Wycomico River DMP Site. Again, this public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times and posted on the county's website stating that a public hearing will be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. Council did have a work session on this request on September the 18th, and we had Mr. Dallas Baker here if there are any questions.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 112, 2018. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution 112-2018. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 112, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
These are the dredge sites on the Wycomico River.
Yes. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 112, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by Mr. Bill Chambers, President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Dean Gray with the Eastside Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Dave Fixt with the Fruitland Chamber of Commerce.
Morning, gentlemen.
How's Dean Gray doing? Dean Gray.
What up, Dave?
I thought we were all on the same page.
Don't be bashful.
We mix it up.
Okay. It's nicer chairs than here.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. Gray said he's going to be here, but I guess he's not. I didn't get word that he wasn't going to. I talked to him late last week, and we confirmed the date, so I apologize for that. Dave Fixt is the president of the Fruitland Chamber. And Dave, I'll go ahead and let you start.
Okay. I'm not really sure what we're supposed to be doing here, but one thing that, as I was thinking about, I'm assuming we're supposed to address some economic education-type issues. And one of the things that came to my mind is something that I'm sure this council can't take care of today, but I found out that homeschooled and private-school children are not able to take advantage of the great technical schools that we have in this county without having, unless they attend that school. So, for example, my grandson, now 16-years-old, is homeschooled. He has to enroll in Warwick Community College in order to go to Parkside at night to take auto mechanics. And I think this county has done a great job, I think, in getting educational geared to the vocations, especially over at Warwick. I think they're doing a fantastic job. But I think this is something where we're basically punishing people for wanting to educate their children differently than in the public schools by not allowing them to be able to take those classes along, you know, without having to pay for them, without having to enroll in college. That's the only thing I have to say about that stuff.
And on the same line, I was asked this past week about homeschooled children not being able to play sports in the schools as well.
Well, that's really not an economic concern so much, but I agree with you. I think that is a concern too, yes.
How's the business climate in Fruitland?
What's that?
How's the business climate in Fruitland? I know it's only 10 miles, five miles away, four miles away, but...
I think we do pretty good. They're, they've been very responsive to the different things, like the building permits and stuff like that, in order to get things going. Fruitland is doing pretty well. They love the support from the chamber because we do a lot of things that the city probably wouldn't do otherwise, like putting up the banners on the streets and the Easter Parade, the Christmas lighting, and all of that stuff. It's all done by the Fruitland Chamber, and I think it develops a sense of community. And we're seeing some good stuff down there with different stores and things and activity. So, yeah, I think that's, I think they're doing good in Fruitland.
I wanted to bring the council just up to date on where we are, the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. I do want to say the Eastside Chamber, Dean, and the folks out there are rehabilitating that chamber. I've been to several events. In fact, John reached out to me about a year ago when they were in the midst of starting to reorganize. We're supporting it. We've joined that chamber, and we're there in any kind of advisory role or supportive role that we can be. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. Thank all of you. The Salisbury Chamber, our mission statement shortly, briefly, is we're an organization of community-focused leaders dedicated to promoting economic development through networking, teamwork, and innovative thinking. The Chamber's a voice and resource for business, education, agriculture, civic, and community organizations throughout Delmarva. As I tell people all the time, we're really a regional chamber. We have members of this chamber from three states and 12 counties in Maryland, also members, as I said, in Sussex, Kent County, Acnamac, Northumberland County, Virginia. We really focus on three pillars: education, advocacy, and connection. We have 720 members. We are growing. We've renewed our focus as a chamber to service our members and offer more member services. Our members told us they wanted more educational opportunities, so we've worked with members here in the local region, our educational institutional partners, national, local experts, federal, state, and local elected leaders on developing a wide array of educational programs for our membership. We work with the Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation, do seven different workshops a year. We work with the Comptroller's Office on workshops. We are lucky enough to have one of only two certified Google trainers statewide that do a series of workshops for members, Google for Business, and those kinds of things. We work, as I said, with our educational partners, with Warwick. We have an expert in Social Security that will be doing a forum here next week. We work with SHRM on educational forums for HR professionals. And as many of you know, you've been to them, our general membership luncheons in the last couple of years have featured just about every member of the governor's cabinet. The next one coming up in November will feature our State Energy Secretary, Mary Beth Tong. She'll be our speaker at the November General Membership Luncheon, talking about what's happening in her department and agency, and I'm sure we'll touch on offshore wind as well. We've had speakers at our luncheons talking about the medical marijuana business, the airport. We featured our Board of Education candidates in August at an intro forum, and then most of you were at the County Council Forum, thank you, in September. Last week, we had the county executive candidates at SU in a forum. And tonight, which will probably be another packed house, we've got a forum that we're doing in conjunction with Greater Salisbury and Salisbury University's PACE program on the state senate race between Senator Mathias and Delegate Caroza. That'll be at 7:00 at SU. We worked with Dorchester, Caroline, Talbot County on joint forums for districts 37, 37A, and 37B. Those were held two weeks ago. On the advocacy piece, many of you know, and you're in business, the House Bill won, which was passed, and then that veto was overridden. The mandatory leave law has had a significant impact to shore businesses in general. We just reported back to the Maryland Chamber on some of the impacts that that bill has had on employers. The reporting restrictions are onerous, to say the least. We also work very closely with our craft beer industry here in the lower shore. Those bills, which were introduced and then reintroduced last year, HB 1283 and HB 1052, still need modification for our local craft beer industry. Some onerous legislation will be coming up in '19 includes the mandatory, excuse me, the minimum wage bill. There were four bills introduced last year which would raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. Some of those bills had it occurring as soon as 2019. None of them made it out of committee, thankfully. Scheduling bills, another issue, we'll be working on '19 at the General Assembly level. And then the sewer bill. We'll still be working to try and find modifications to that, which, as we all know, adversely impacts our ability to grow residentially, as well as our other rural counties. The state of the schools, we started an event last year featuring the Wycomico County Superintendent. She will again be doing that at Parkside, January 28. You're all aware that Greater Salisbury Committee and the Chamber have formed the Wycomico Education Foundation, and I want to thank the council, all of you, for investing in the five new pre-K classrooms in this current year's budget, and we're hoping that the executive will introduce money in his budget to add the six additional pre-K classrooms that are required to fill that need fully. Remembering that what we're doing with education in this county is investing. We're not spending or funding, we're investing. We're investing in the future, and it is the number-one economic driver. Things we'll be talking about in the coming year, nothing earth-shattering, you know, discussions about the revenue cap are ongoing and will continue. We'll work with our partners at the Greater Salisbury and the folks at Beacon to try and drill down even further. We'll be curious to see what happens at Talbot County. They have two ballot questions to modify the revenue cap. The conversations I've had with folks in the county, including their elected leaders, pretty much assure me that one of those two versions is going to pass. They see it as a real need up there. On the connecting part of what we do as a chamber, we connect members for business. We represent their interests on issues they face in the city, any issues they have on the county or state level. We're working with MDE on an issue with one of our members right now. We've also worked with state planning, commerce, and ag with members that had some issues and questions. Many of you have heard the malting plant, which will be arriving here in Salisbury shortly. They should be up and running in 2019. It'll be one of the largest malting plants east of the Rocky Mountains, and it'll be here in our jurisdiction, and they plan to be producing malt first quarter of next year. And I want to thank the council again and the executive for signing the PACE program that is now law, and that first project that will come under the PACE header will be 132 Main Street. You all are familiar with that project. They're planning to add seven stories to that existing building. So current issues that are pressing here in the business community in our region for businesses, no shock, qualified and employable workers. That is number one. We had a sold-out job fair last Friday. We had over 2,000 job seekers attend, but we had 70 businesses at the job fair. And that issue with employable and qualified workers cuts across all sectors here in our region. Our businesses are concerned about inflation. It is, it is appearing to be something we need to be really concerned about in the next year or two fiscal year cycles. Concerns about more state mandates. The scheduling bill is one, the minimum wage is one. In a region like ours, bumping the minimum wage to $15 an hour could mean jobs will be lost, and that's just not something we can absorb. And our businesses are really just concerned about our ability to continue to compete, especially with our neighboring states, in particular Delaware. Some things that we do as a chamber that are a little more low-key and fun, last week we had a sold-out Taste of the Town event here at the Downtown Gallery. We'll do that again in April with Restaurant Week. We do multi-chamber events. We do one every August with Dorchester up at Leighton's Chance, has a couple hundred folks at it. And all of our chamber boards, from Wilmington to Cape Charles, we meet two times a year. That next one will be coming up November 13. You're invited to any of these as well, council members, at Heritage Shores. It's a chance for board members from northern Delaware, central Delaware, and in Virginia to get together and just network and talk about what issues they're facing within their own chambers of commerce and their own business sectors. We had a great golf tournament at Green Hill. President Cannon came close to winning, but not this year. He'll have to try next year. And we're working closely, in a lot of meaningful ways, with UMES. They have a new president, as you all know. We support them on this wonderful Veterans Day dinner gala they do on campus. This one will be November 9. We're getting the business community more engaged with UMES. We already have, and will continue to have, a great relationship with Warwick and SU as well. And then I hope you'll all be able to make it on December 7 at Salisbury University. We've got the Southern Delmarva Economic Forecast. We've kind of modified it more Southern Delmarva. We have the Economic Development Directors from our four lower-shore counties, but we also have the Economic Development Directors from Sussex and Acnamac County participating this year as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns. Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Dave. Yeah, I was going to ask you about the chamber's position on the minimum wage bill, as you briefly touched on it in the beginning, and then you answered my question towards the end there. So we get that question quite a bit, especially when we go to forums.
You know, Montgomery County has their own minimum wage, and other jurisdictions do. And I'm not going to comment on whether I think that it's fair to put that on small businesses to absorb it, but in our region, a $15 an hour minimum wage is, it would most certainly cost, not a few jobs, it would cost thousands of jobs.
Would that, would that be even worse if, let's say, Wycomico County did it, and, you know, Worcester didn't, and, you know, I mean, if we did a regional or a county minimum wage like Montgomery did, I mean, that would be probably even worse than if it was statewide, wouldn't it? Because our neighbors wouldn't be having something similar.
Oh, I think what's happened in Montgomery County, and I've talked to my counterparts in Frederick and in Prince George's, you've seen a migration of small businesses into those jurisdictions for that very reason. It started, and I remember the Montgomery County minimum wage is relatively new, but I think if we look back on this two or three years from now, you'll see what we don't want is small businesses leaving a jurisdiction.
That's right.
Any other comments?
For the Fruitland Chamber, Mr. Fixt, is there a meeting tomorrow, a luncheon?
Yes, there is, at the Redmond's at 12:00. You're all welcome. Come on down. We have the, I think it's the Maryland Food Bank is going to be down there speaking.
Well, we appreciate you, gentlemen, being here today. I know, I've witnessed it personally, as far as what you bring to the table, whether it's advocacy on a political basis, whether it's education. You had mentioned you're working with the Board of Education. You work with Warwick. You work with Salisbury University. You work with UMES, and you do that all the time, and that is important. As you said, it's important to business. It's what's going to get our workforce, highly-educated workforce in Wycomico County, which is what we need. And, you know, you also advocate for businesses throughout the community. I know that you and I have been, we've been in the governor's office just talking about wind energy and trying to move forward on initiatives for the airport. So I'd like to thank you for that as well. I don't think we've seen, you know, such an active chamber in many years, and we've always had a really good chamber. We've had a lot of great leaders. But, you know, what we're seeing at this day and time is, I think, over, above and beyond, and I compliment you for that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And as always, we, you know, we enjoy the working relationship we have with the chamber. It's a very pro-business council. Anything we can do to continue to help, you let us know, and we'll be there for you.
We will. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 113, 2018, declaring that Pediatric
Cardiology of Maryland LLC and PCOM Holdings LLC are eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits in connection with property in a business located by 60 Riverside Drive, Suite B 102, Salisbury, Maryland. In order for a business to be eligible for enterprise zone benefit, they have to meet certain criteria, one of which is to create more than two full-time positions since they have located in the zone, and the other is to invest in more than $50,000 in their property since they've located in the zone. And both of these organizations have done, have met both criteria.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 113, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion of questions? Another, if you've had time to read it. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution, excuse me, all those in favor of Resolution 113, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay. The next two items on the agenda are the submission and approval of a reappointment to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the Director of Administration is submitting the reappointment of Tony Nichols to the Lower Shore Workforce Board. This board is responsible for overseeing the Workforce Investment Act funds and programs in the local community. Resolution Number 114, 2018, is confirming the reappointment of Tony Nichols to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 114, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Agenda item numbers seven and eight are the submission and approval of an appointment to the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the Director of Administration is submitting the appointment of Robert S. Simmons, Jr. to the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. This board is responsible for issuing licenses for electricians to do work within the county. The board also hears complaints and oversees state license testing for master electricians, general electricians, and limited-licensed electricians. Resolution Number 115, 2018, is confirming the appointment of Robert S. Simmons, Jr. to the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 115, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next for consideration is Resolution Number 116, 2018, approving and publishing the dates for the official holidays for county employees for the year 2019.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 116, 2018.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, entertained a motion to adjourn from the legislative session to convene as the Board of Health.
Sub move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now convened as the Board of Health. First item on the agenda is the report of the health of the county, Mrs. Lori Brewster, our health officer.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. Nice, crisp day.
And it falls here.
Yes. So I had a few things on my agenda to bring to your attention. The first is our every-three-year community health needs assessment that's required from our accrediting body. And again, we are one of, I think, seven local health departments in the state of Maryland Maryland that is accredited. The hospital, PRMC, has to do a community health needs assessment every three years as well, so we decided to enter a joint venture with them as opposed to go it on our own because it just made more cost-effective sense to do it that way. So, we have been working on this since April. We have had key informant interviews, and there's, I think there were 10 of those that were done. Over 500 surveys were completed, both online and paper, and that exceeded the last community health needs assessment. And we conducted focus groups in the community with community members to get their feedback on what the needs are for the health of the community. We will begin later this month doing some strategic planning on identifying the areas of concern so that we can develop a plan moving forward, and that plan should be released sometime in the first part of next year. Any questions about that?
No questions.
Okay. Our COAT update. COAT is the Community Outreach Addictions Team. We've been moving forward with that program and actually operationalized it in June of 2016. We did have a slight increase in overdose deaths for the first quarter of 2018. The second quarter of 2018 has been released since I submitted the agenda for today, and I'm pleased to say that our overdose deaths have gone back down, and we are below 2017 data. The rest of the state, well, the state as a whole is up on overdose deaths, so we are very pleased. Our two neighboring counties also have seen a little bit of an uptick in their overdose deaths. So, we are still moving forward with the response from our COAT team members.
Do you know how the trend has been with other counties throughout the state?
There have been a couple that have had some decreases, one of which was Allegheny County, but most of the counties have seen an uptick in their overdose deaths. And those that have seen a decline in their overdose deaths have also seen a decline in their emergency department visits. Wycomico has also seen a decline in our emergency department visits from 2017 as well.
Have you coordinated with other counties? I know you've certainly shared our program and our success with the state of Maryland, the governor's office. How about as far as working with other counties? How's that worked?
There are similar programs throughout many counties in the state, one of which is in Worcester County. They did their own little changes to their program. Salisbury University, their new president went to their social work department after hearing about our program at the Greater Salisbury Committee, and they wrote a HERSA grant for a consortium to look at replicating these types of programs. Now, HERSA funds rural counties, and we are not designated, Wycomico is not designated as a rural county by the federal government, but they have asked me to be a part of that consortium, and they have multiple counties sitting on that. So, there will be some work in looking at developing similar programs.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Okay.
Are you moving on from COAT?
Nope, still on COAT.
Can I have a question? I do have a question on that concerning the increase and decrease. And when you say there's a decrease, is that a decrease from the first quarter 2018 or prior to that?
There is a decrease in the first half year from 2018 versus 2017.
Seventeen.
Yes, there was a little bit of an increase during the first quarter, but we were seeing that all across the state.
Okay.
We also have seen a decline in the number of children born with neonatal abstinence syndrome. These are the children that stay in the neonatal unit for long periods of time, just trying to wean them off of the drugs that the parent has used. We also are continuing to train individuals in the use of naloxone. We have a training session the second Tuesday of every month at the library, and that's going well. We also have been training people at our forums. And Council President Cannon and I were on the phone the other day, and we were talking about speaking engagements related to our COAT team. I had just, at the end of September, went to an American Association of Case Managers and spoke at one of their conferences on our integration of peers into the opioid response. I'm also attending a health quality indicators meeting on Election Day, so I have to do early voting to speak on our COAT program. And our COAT team program has been nominated for an award through Health Quality Indicators, so I can update you after Election Day.
With the COAT team, who do you partner with in the county? You know, the State's Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Department? Is that, how does that all work?
We partner with any willing entity. We initially had the State's Attorney's Office on board. They are still on board. We partner with the Sheriff's Department in providing law enforcement time to work with our peers in the community. We partner with the hospital because our peers are called into PRMC, which is a little bit of a unique situation in that a lot of the other hospitals hire their own peers. We work to have our peers respond to the hospital. We also have partnered with, to some degree, with the city of Salisbury. They provide a small amount of funding toward our COAT team members. We also reach out to any community organization that wishes to be of assistance, such as the Recovery Resource Center and the local churches in the area. Any other questions about COAT?
How are you structured as far as the opioid program is concerned now?
As far as what?
Well, I believe we had some funding that came in, and I was just wondering how you had coordinated, whether you have a separate department that deals with it, or exactly, you know, how that's structured.
That's our opioid intervention team, in which we get state funding. It's a very small amount of state funding, and that is funneled through the Health Department and the opioid intervention team has three components. There's a senior policy group that consists of the Executive's Office, the Health Department, State's Attorney's Office, and the Sheriff's Department, and we look at what are the needs in the community. We also have a strategic planning group, which includes all of the public departments within the county to identify and approve some of the issues related to what the senior policy group has determined as needs. And then we have an operational arm, which is made up of a prevention, treatment, and enforcement group, and they, we all meet at minimum once a month. Our senior policy group meets every other week. So, the dollars are funneled through the Health Department, and what we have done with those dollars based upon the strategic planning group is we hired an opioid coordinator for the entire county, and they are hired through the county. And thank you for approving that. And we are doing a lot of work with media campaigns, with looking at prevention activities with the school system, and they are doing a lot of work. We are also involved with the secondary education with Warwick and SU. And we actually had a small decrease in funding, as is typical with, when you do well, you get less money. So, our dollars went down a small amount this past year, and I anticipate they will go down again next year because they base the funding on a base amount plus the rest of the funding is based upon the percentage of overdose deaths for each county. So, with ours declining, I anticipate a decline in that budget as well. And that's unfortunate.
Who's the opioid director?
Her name is Chrissy Bowie Simpson. She's been on board for about six months. She's a recent graduate from Salisbury University in the Social Work Department. She did her Hope Corps internship with our opioid team, so she had the background, and we were able to hire her.
Good.
So.
Yeah, it'd be interesting if you could maybe get the state to consider funding when you've also have a proven track record, and, you know, you've proven that your program is a success, so that you can maintain that program.
Don't think we haven't tried, and we will continue to try.
Sort of upside down. I mean, if a county's failing and it's getting worse and worse, they're throwing good money after bad, so they should probably, you know, I'm preaching to the choir.
Yes, you are.
You understand?
Yes, and Chrissy is actually attending the Opioid Operation Command Center meeting in which they're doing a swap of ideas, and she's presenting on our COAT team at that training again. This will be the fourth time we have presented at the Opioid Operation Command Center. So, we are getting press. We actually are mentioned in one of the press releases that just came out about the Opioid Operation Command Center and the good work that's being done with our COAT team.
Great. Excellent.
We also have a Walk Wycomico initiative. We have launched a website. It's walkwycomico.com. I encourage you to go on there. It will be listing all of our walking trails, biking trails, the whole nine yards. We've worked with a large number of community members to get that developed. We are also working on a phone app with, I believe, at Salisbury University, so that you can click on your phone and pull up where's the closest area that you can walk safely. We, breast and cervical cancer program, unfortunately, the state lost funding for the breast and cervical cancer program. They lost over $1 million in funding, and they decided to regionalize those services to the women in Wycomico, Worcester, and Somerset. They identified Wycomico as the lead, so we will be providing those services in Somerset and Worcester, as well as Wycomico, beginning April 1 of 2019. And our sexually transmitted infections update, this is always a concern of mine. I bring it to you every time that we meet. We continue to have an uptick in sexually transmitted infections across the county. There is an uptick across the state. We seem to have a little bit of a handle on chlamydia. That has declined, but our gonorrhea numbers and our syphilis numbers have gone up over the past year, and so we're getting out there, doing some work with the university and with the community. We've got a task force that meets to try to address some of these issues. Our syphilis numbers are up because we had such few numbers in the past that even one will increase our rates. So, I just wanted to lay that out there. And I understand that there was a request on asthma and cancer. I'm not sure who that request came from. So, I pulled up the data related to our asthma and cancer rates, and I want you to know that the state is behind in their data collection. It's always behind several years because they have to go through a series of washing the data and scrubbing the data. So, what we're looking at is a measurement period of 2014 to 2016 for cancer mortality. I will say Wycomico County is down from the previous period, which was 2013 to 2015. We are still higher than the state, but we are, have been seeing a decline in our cancer rates. Our emergency department visit rate due to asthma, we did see an uptick in 2016, but it's a very small uptick, not necessarily statistically significant. We are working with the hospital on developing a coalition to address some of the asthma-associated admissions to the emergency department, as well as admissions to the hospital. That coalition is just now beginning. So, we are looking at the potential of going out into homes and looking for some of the triggers related to particularly childhood asthma in the home, whether it be smoking, other things in the environment, dust and those types of things. So, we're hopeful that we can get that back off on the ground.
Do you see cancer concentrated in certain areas, I mean geographic areas, or, I mean, how is it kind of distributed cancer and asthma throughout the county?
It's all over the county. We have not seen any clusters of cancer, nor have we seen any significant clusters of asthma-related illness. It's all across the county.
How's, how about the Environmental Protection Services? How are we moving on that as far as inspections, well, septics and all that? How's that department holding up?
We're moving. As you know, we had significant rainfall during the spring and summer, and so we've had numerous replacement systems that have had to go in. And septic failures are our priority, of course, because we don't want those to continue, so we have been moving forward with those, and we've been able to hire a few additional employees. The environmental specialists are hard to find since SU's program shut down, and so we have just onboarded three additional environmental specialists. So, we're in the training mode with them, but it's on-the-job training.
Because I know in the past with that particular department, there's been concerns as to whether there's been delays, and you're familiar with all of this, well before you were even in charge of the Health Department as a whole. And I was wondering if that's, if you think that's progressed substantially, whereas, you know, we've eliminated delays, or I think a lot, in a lot of instances, there was sort of a contradiction of reports. There would be one report in one month, and then a couple of weeks later, another test would have to be taken. And I was just trying to get a feel from you as to where we are with that. Do you think, if we've gone beyond that?
I will say that there are delays, but that is in part and parcel related to the volume of failing systems that we've been dealing with in the past few months, and the fact that we've had a decrease in our staffing. But we're getting that back up to speed and moving forward with getting those processed.
A lot of it has to do with moving up to the state level, right?
I'm sorry.
A lot of it has to do with moving up to the state level, like MBE and things like that.
MBE comes in and does approvals of INA system, innovative alternative systems. Is that what you're referencing?
Yes.
They're required to, by law, to approve those systems, so a lot of our failures have resulted in the INA systems.
The county was able to have a meeting last week between local realtors and builders, and had MBE and the Health Department there, and a lot of the concerns were aired, and that gave us a great chance to go ahead and see what things we need to focus on. So, that was a very productive meeting, so I appreciate the realtors bringing that to our attention and being able to sit down with us at Civic Center, so.
Yeah, because the one thing we want is, we want the housing industry to get to, you know, jumpstart and get back in full force, and I think everyone's doing everything they can to try to make that happen. This is usually step one before anything else.
Yep.
Do you think that the failing septic systems are at a critical juncture? Because a lot of what we talk about, and this council's reviewed it itself, as to, you know, a countywide wastewater authority, which is a huge astronomical undertaking, and I don't think it could even be done without a state assistance. I don't think it could even be done without a state assistance. But I'm just wondering what your perspective is on that.
We saw a record rainfall and I attribute a lot of the failures to that. We, in my tenure with the state, I've been with the state for 34 years and I've not seen this much rainfall.
Yeah.
So I think that that's part of the reason why we're seeing some of those systems failing.
What are the demographics on the failing systems in the county? I'm, I'm hearing a lot about systems on the west side, east side of the county.
It's, it, the smaller properties are of concern and those are the, the properties on the east side, but we're seeing systems all over the county, not targeted to one individual area.
And we just had a significant rainfall?
Yes, we did, so.
You mentioned the smaller properties, what that has entails is there's not room to put another system. So off Ocean City Road in some of those areas, you know, they have a real small lot and they don't have a reserve area.
Correct.
And I think something else, I noticed a piece of property the other day, somebody had built a building on it. I noticed where they built the building, they've just eliminated a reserve system, a reserve area when they put that building there. So years ahead, they might have issues, you know? So I think that's something that needs to be, you know, followed up on too, so. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Entertaining motion to adjourn as the bill is passed and we can, may reconvene as Wycomico County Council on Legislative Session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Allies in favor?
No.
Morning, Mr. Taylor.
Good morning again. This would be second reading on bills today. The first one, which is legislative bill 2018-09, an act to repeal the current chapter 133 of the Wycomico County Code entitled Dogs and Other Animals and enact a new chapter 133 titled Animal Control. This bill was introduced on August 7 of this year by the council president. If I can, for just a moment, give you a real quick recap of, that is an awfully long time for, for most of our bills. They don't normally go that long after their introduction. And actually, this bill superseded an earlier bill that was introduced in the early, earlier this year, but we just couldn't get it done in time. So it was reintroduced on August 7, as I just said. Ms. Hurley and I have spent, I guess you would, it would be more than hours probably if you added it all up, it would be in days rather than hours, meeting with people, discussing this, drafting it. What, what we have in the bill right now, the draft, is an amalgam of a bill that was introduced or presented to council by the committee that council appointed for the purpose of revising the, what's now called the animal control law. Our research and additions to what they presented, there has been a turnover within the last couple of months, as you know, in the management, directorship of the Humane Society, which is essentially our animal control authority. That's delayed things a bit. We have met with the new interim director, Kevin Ustleton. He has made suggestions. They've been added in there too. So it's an amalgam of all those things. And in addition, at the last meeting of council, there was a work session where we discussed further amendments, some of which came from these meetings, others from the, from the research and readings that Ms. Hurley and I had done. And there are, in addition to the bill that's in the, the draft bill right now that's in the briefing book, there are also three pages, as you've probably seen, of proposed amendments, many of which, I think almost all of which, were discussed at the last meeting. And it's as a result of that that most of those amendments have been, are being proposed, one of which was specifically asked for. It was kind of an additional new thing on dog licensing. There is one additional amendment that's not on that list. I've written it out in hand and given it to Mr. Holloway, Matt Holloway, who I understand is going to be the sort of reader or master of ceremonies in terms of these amendments. And if he wants to read them, I think that would, the logical thing to do would be to introduce the bill, whatever is needed to get it before council and then let Mr. Holloway go through the amendments. And I might just add after each one, why we've done it or if there's some aspect of it that I think would be worth presenting to council. I'll try to be as short as I can on that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Entertaining motion to approve legislative bill 2018-09.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Think the discussion, obviously, what we'll start with is the recommendations of amendments through Councilman Matt Holloway and any other discussion can follow suit.
So there's 12 amendments here. After each one, we'll stop and vote on each one individually.
Thank you.
All right, so the first amendment is section 133-4 titled Dog Licenses. To be amended, to read as follows. Part A, a dog older than six months must have a county license and its owner is required to obtain such license, provided that this requirement does not apply if the dog is licensed elsewhere, has been present in the county for less than 30 days. The county council may set a fee for the license and provide for exemptions from the license requirement and/or for the fee in specific instances. Part B, in order for the license to be issued, the dog must have a rabies vaccination that is both current and valid under Maryland law. The license shall expire on the date when the dog should be vaccinated again, as noted on the vaccination certificate, next vaccination due date, et cetera. Unless the county executive shall specify other license documentation, the current vaccination certificate shall serve as a license documentation, provided that if any information thereon, owner's name, et cetera, is or becomes incorrect, the correct information must be furnished by the owner to the licensing agent or to the animal control authority. Part C, as a condition of the license, a tag in the form provided by the animal control authority or such different form as may be specified by the county executive must be immediately available whenever the dog is in the presence of persons other than its owner. For that purpose, the owner of a licensed dog or person having custody thereof shall attach the tag to a substantial collar and keep the collar and tag on the dog at all times, except when it is confined in a kennel, home, or building, provided secure confinement, being used for hunting under the charge of an attendant or for law enforcement or public safety under the control or supervision of a person duly authorized to perform the particular function. If the tag is lost, a replacement tag must be issued, may be issued by the animal control authority for reasonable charge not to exceed the license fee set by the council. Part D, the license may be issued by the county, the animal control authority, or by any licensing agent designated by the county executive or the animal control authority, who or which shall, number one, obtain from the person requesting license a legal copy of the dog's current rabies vaccination certificate, together with any more accurate information regarding the owner and the license fee, and two, provide to the owner or person requesting the license, a tag of the kind described in this section unless it has already been provided and such licensing documentation, if any, specified by the county executive. At least monthly, the licensing agent shall provide the animal control authority for each dog licensed, a legible copy of the vaccination certificate, and additional information mentioned above. The tag number, if it is not listed on the vaccination certificate, and the licensing fee, which should be paid by check or check drawn on the agent's bank account. Part E, under Maryland law, currently codified as section 13-107 of the local government article, a lawfully licensed dog whose ownership can be provided is personal property to owners.
That is a motion for an amendment. Need a second, please? I need a second.
I thought I made the motion.
Matt made the motion.
I made the motion.
I need a second on the amendment. Any discussion?
I did have a little bit of heartburn with this, but I do see that it says that it would allow the current practice, which is the, the current vaccination certificate shall serve as the license document, so it wouldn't require a new one. So a, an additional licensing document, so, so I'm okay with this, so.
Okay.
My objections are, they're all right.
Thank you. We've overcome one hurdle.
[laughing].
Any, any further questions in reference to the specific amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment has been approved. Mr. Holloway?
Okay, the next amendment is to section 133-6, to be amended to add conduct to the title, so it reads prohibited conduct.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment has been approved.
Okay, the next amendment will be to section 133-16 titled Empowerment and Redemption Provisions, letter A, to be amended to read as follows. An animal control officer is authorized to impound an animal found running at large until the matter is resolved in accordance with this section and applicable state law, see section 133-10, provided that if the animal is wearing a current rabies tag or has a microchip with owner identification, the waiting period for disposition to other than the owner shall be at least six business days and an animal may not be euthanized within 10 business days after being impounded, except under the conditions specified in section 133-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to section 133-16, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment has been approved.
Okay, the next amendment is section 133-16 titled Empowerment and Redemption Provisions, letter B, to be amended to read as follows. The animal control officer upon impounding an animal must record the breed, color, sex, and license status of the animal. Within 24 hours after impounding an animal, this information shall be posted on the county control authority's website. If licensed, the officer must record the name and address of the owner and the number of this licensed tag and attempt to contact the owner as soon as practicable.
Just a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to section 133-16, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes.
Okay, the next amendment is section 133-17 titled Confinement and Euthanas- Euthanasation of Certain Animals, letter C, to be amended to read as follows. If a female dog or cat in heat or an unneutered male dog or cat belonging to the same owner is impounded twice within 12 months, the dog or cat must not be released to its owner and will become the property of the animal control authority unless the owner pays for the spaying and neutering of the dog or cat by the animal control authority within one week after notice.
Second?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to section 133-17, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes.
Okay, the next amendment is section 133-19 titled Adoption, to be amended to read as follows. To adopt a dog or cat from the animal control authority, the adopter must pay or reimburse the animal control authority to neuter or spay the animal, if not already done, and other reasonable charges and fees. In addition, the adopter must certify in writing under penalty of perjury that he or she has not been convicted of animal cruelty or neglect by a court of law.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to section 133-19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment has been approved.
The next amendment is section 133-21 titled Abandonment of Animals, to be amended to read as follows. It is unlawful to leave an animal on a road, in a public place, or on private property with the intent to abandon the animal unless the animal is a community cat being released as part of a trap-neuter return program approved by the animal control authority, in which event the animal may be released on private property with the consent of its owner.
Second.
We have a motion to second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to section 133-21, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment passes.
Okay, there's one more here that, that's been inserted, that was not on this printout. This is section 133-33, title B, Animal Care. In subpart B, add after the word wind and wind chill factor. Also in subpart B, add after the words direct sunlight and heat index. Second?
Motion's second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that's 133-33.
133-33.
33.
Yep.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, amendment is approved.
Okay, the next amendment is to add a new section, 133-34, entitled Entry onto Private Property, to read as follows. A, animal control officers, the sheriff and deputy sheriffs may enter onto private property. One, as permitted by law, provided however that consent to entry by an animal control officer shall be effective only for the specific purposes of which the owner of the property or other persons consenting to the entry has been informed by the person requesting to enter. Or, two, in the absence of such consent, if the animal control officer, sheriff or deputy sheriff has actual knowledge that there's an ongoing violation of this article by, A, abuse or neglect of the animal, improper tethering or failure to provide adequate care or shelter for, or B, failure to satisfy a requirement issued for a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog, such entry shall be limited to causing such violation to be terminated by the appropriate action, including removal of animals for impalement by the animal control authority. However, entry under those circumstances is not hereby required. B, the sheriff or deputy sheriff, and subject to the approval by the county executive, an animal control officer may request the county attorney to seek in a court of competent jurisdiction, a search and seizure warrant to allow entry onto private property and entry into any building and/or any or other enclosure thereon, subject to appropriate legal procedure and limitations for the purpose of the enforcement of this article. C, this section does not limit or prescribe any lawful entry.
Motion's second.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Taylor, does law enforcement already have the authority to go onto property if there's, you know, if they suspect there's a violation of the law or with a warrant and all that?
There's a state code provision right now and that's in 133-9, Care of Mistreated Animals. That is out of the state law.
Yeah.
And it does allow entry under certain circumstances.
Right.
The reason that we put this in was because of comments that were made in those meetings that I mentioned that we've had with various people, that for some reason, the animal control authority officers had been given to understand that they couldn't enter onto, onto property under various circumstances, to make it very clear. And secondly, to provide in there about going into court to get the warrant. That happens to be more or less out of the Baltimore County ordinance. In fact, this whole section is modeled pretty closely on the Baltimore County ordinance.
And, I mean, if they already have the authority, I guess my thought would be, I don't know why we need to put a second granting of authority in there for that. If they already have the general authority under state law, perhaps animal control needs to be educated better as to what state law allows. So, I mean, I guess that would be my, that kind of objection to.
Well, this goes a little bit beyond what the state law, for example, the part one about entry onto the property with the consent of the owner, specifying that that would be limited only to, to what the officer tells the owner why he wants to come onto the property and not some other, in other words, he couldn't come in and write up a bunch of other citations when he's come on for a specific purpose and go beyond that. That's not provided in the state law.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to section 133-34, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One, one opposed? Motion's carried, amendment is approved.
Okay, the next amendment is to add a new section, 133-35, titled Disposal of Dead Animals, to read as follows. A, the owner or person in possession of property is required to promptly dispose of the following if present on the property. One, domestic animals and animals being maintained for the production of food, food products or fiber, or breeding that have died and been killed by accident or otherwise. And, two, other, including wild animals, if killed by poison, hunting, or other means by the owner or other persons in possession of the property, or a guest, invitee, or licensee of such owner or other person. B, appropriate disposition may be made by the following means in accordance with applicable requirements. One, cremation. Two, deposit in the county landfill, county's landfill. Three, burial or compost, and if done in a manner that will substantially prevent odor emission or attraction of vermin, insects, and scavengers. See Maryland Extension Service Fact Sheet 537 for poultry and Fact Sheet 717 for animals on any property with the consent of its owner. Or, four, otherwise is authorized or required by law. C, a dead, dead animal or carcass thereof may not be deposited or placed in any public street, highway, or right-of-way, or, except as permitted in this section. on any private property. D, failure to dispose of dead animals as required by this section is subject to the obligation to reimburse the county for disposing of such animals, as well as monetary civil penalties stated elsewhere in this article.
Second.
Okay, motion's second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to section one thirty-three dash thirty-five say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, amendment is approved.
The next amendment is, uh, to then renumber all other sections accordingly.
Second.
Motion's second, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, amendment's been approved.
All right, and the last one, um, to add a civil infraction fine of a hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, or five, and five hundred dollars for disposal of dead animals in the section titled Civil Penalty.
Second.
Motion's second, discussion?
Could I make just one remark on that, Mr. Cannon?
Yes, sir.
The two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollar items, those would be for the second or third amendment, uh, violations within one year of the first. So, just to make that clear, as part of the amendment.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, amendment is approved. Thank you, Councilman Hawley. Any further discussion on the legislative bill as amended?
It's been a lot of work, and everyone that worked on it, served on the committee, should be commended.
As well as our legal counsel.
Yeah, it has taken a lot of time, it's been a lot of hard work. We do appreciate the work of, uh, Laura and Bob and staff and, um, and the committee as a whole.
Joe?
Well, this started, um, back in, I think it was oh seven. We had, um, a young man mauled by a couple of dogs down on the, um, New Willards, and we seen that we needed, um, you know, to strengthen our laws to protect people. And, of course, that moved into protecting the laws to protect the animals too, which was a good thing. Uh, there's a lot of things that we've put in here, um, over the years. It's been changed a number of times, and I think in the future, uh, this law could be looked at again if there needed to be any changes made, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, all those in favor of legislative bill two thousand eighteen oh nine as amended, say aye, starting with, uh, Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Highway?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Matt Highway?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, legislative bill two thousand eighteen oh nine has been approved unanimously. Very good. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, yes, just before we move on to the next item, I just would make one further remark on that. Nothing to do with what's in the bill itself, but, uh, the Animal Control Authority, the Humane Society, operates under essentially a contract with the county, which I think now is several decades old. Um, goes back certainly before this bill and probably even the, the last Animal Control Ordinance. And I think it would be a good idea, once the Humane Society has their director in place, knows who that's going to be going forward, probably, let's just say roughly the first of the year, to take an, uh, that, that contract should be reexamined, I think, for-
It's a good idea, it's a good point.
Because of its age and because of the turnover.
I agree. Very good point.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
The, um, the next bill is, uh, for introduction, it's legislative bill two thousand eighteen dash eleven, an act to add a new chapter sixty, um, titled Contracts and Purchasing to the Wycomico County Code, to provide conditions, including council approval, on certain leases and other contracts that by their terms impose or might impose an obligation upon the county for payments of funds in a future fiscal year. Uh, this is, uh, introduced by the council president.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I retain a motion to introduce legislative bill two thousand eighteen dash one.
Submove.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, and I don't believe, uh, Councilman Holloway, I, I don't need a, uh, roll call or an introduction, is that correct?
Got an introduction.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carried, legislative bill two thousand eighteen dash eleven has been introduced. Mrs. Hurley?
Um, we can schedule the public hearing on November the sixth for this bill.
November the sixth. Thank you very much. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. I know there's some individuals here that wanted to make public comments. If you could, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Hello, my name is Joan Malouf. I'm currently a resident of Worcester County, but I lived in Wycomico County for thirty-five years, and for thirty of those years, I lived on the property known as Pirate's Wharf that you'll be discussing in the work session today. I'm a professor emeritus at Salisbury University. I'm the executive director of the Old Growth Forest Network, a nonprofit organization that represents, among others, ninety-five Wycomico County families. I'm also representing the three hundred and eighty-eight members of the Friends of the Forest Salisbury Group. I've written four books about forest ecology, this is one of them. So, I congratulate the county on getting potential grant funding for the development of Pirate's Wharf. I encourage the council to vote in favor of the grants. However, I'm here today to talk about the forest section of the park, which is the majority, the two hundred and forty acres on the other side of the road from the river. The way the forest is represented in the grant application is inaccurate, and it has never been open for discussion by general residents. On the National Park Service grant application, the county lists comments in the twenty fourteen Forest Stewardship Plan. The plan states that the property as a whole has been declining in growth, and that long-term harvest scheduling should begin now. So, harvesting would be cutting. It goes on to note that failure to harvest could damage long-term health of the forest. The county's National Park Service grant application goes on to note that the county would pursue the recommendations outlined in the Forest Stewardship Plan. We're concerned because the Forest Stewardship Plan is completely inaccurate. There's no evidence to support the statements about forest decline. In twenty sixteen, another registered forester provided input to the county's Natural Resource Advisory Committee Council. He sampled growth rings from the trees and found no evidence of decline. The trees are healthy and growing strong. My decades of experience in this particular forest, hiking through it for thirty years, and my academic research also confirms the inaccuracy and inappropriateness of the twenty fourteen Forest Stewardship Plan. We're asking that there be public hearings before any actions are taken in the forest. We're opposed to any logging or thinning of the forest. However, we are in favor of recreational trails through the forest, and we recognize that some cutting of trees will have to be done to create those recreational trails, including the boardwalks. We recommend that the county council should preserve the forest with a forever-wild easement, so it will always remain the wonderful park resource that it is today. It'll be just a fantastic place for park residents to be able to hike through that forest and see it in its natural condition without any logging or clearing going on. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Malouf. Would you be able to, um, forward that to the council as maybe a PDF document?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other public comments? It's okay.
Hi, my name is Don Ross, and I'm a Wycomico County resident. Well, I'm very much in favor of, uh, everything that Joan has presented. Um, and I would, uh, I would strongly suggest, I would urge the council to consider Joan Malouf as a, as a resource. Uh, I know that, uh, the council has not always been in agreement with her, but, um, um, she's, has preserved, um, forests in, in, in several states throughout the country. And this is something we should, uh, we should be setting the trend here, rather than, uh, bucking it. So, um, I urge you to, to, uh, ask her, uh, to be a consultant on, on, on this issue. Uh, what drew me to, uh, it's a little bit of story, it might be, uh, not quite what you're used to hearing, but, um, years ago, uh, I took a, a ride down the river with my father, uh, just to show him around the river, and I stopped at this one particular place. There's a steep bank there, and, uh, it just grabbed me, and it just screamed Native American. So, uh, we sat there for, for a few minutes and, and, and then moved on. Uh, several years later, I was invited, uh, and invited to, in a, a meditation group, at Joan's house, not knowing that this was the place that I had stopped at. I guess I'll share this part. Um, during this meditation group, there was one particular instance where I had a very clear vision of a Native American man. Looked like a medicine man, dancing in the living room. So, I took note of this. Um, I was later told that this is, uh, what, uh, Quantico, and what that word meant, and what it means is a dancing place. So, um, also at this place, uh, during, uh, during these sessions, there were three instances where there was a man, uh, a presence standing next to me, not with a body, but it was stronger and more palpable than anybody else in the room. Sometime later, I was shown a picture, uh, of Joan's husband who had passed away. That's who I was seeing. Felt benevolent, um, and like something was being asked of me. I didn't even know whether I was gonna tell you guys that or not, but there, there that is. So, uh, that, that, uh, led me to, uh, see if there were any empirical, uh, if there was any empirical data, data on this. And, uh, as a matter of fact, there, there is some. My impression is that this site was, uh, was, was more than just a place that, uh, Native Americans would, would have, uh, just passed by. It's on a hill, there's a breeze there in the, in the evening. It's a unique site. So, back in two thousand and nine, I think it was during the period where, uh, the county was cons- uh, considering dredging a certain area and putting in a marina, and a fellow named Edward Otter, um, an archaeologist that does work for the state, uh, was, uh, asked to do a, a survey, uh, which you'll get copies of. There was the survey done on the deline- delineation of the cemetery there, which is, you guys already have this in your, in your files. I, I had to ask for a, um, Freedom of Information, uh, request to, to get this. So, you should already have it. So, according to Ed Otter, there, there is a reason to do a, um, what's called, um, I've had a stroke, so I get, I get caught with words every once in a while. A phase one, uh, survey. Um, the only thing that's been done so far is a, is a walkthrough. I also have spoken to, uh, a few, uh, um, indigenous natives, indigenous folks in this area, and, um, they would like to, uh, perhaps see a little more of this and, and have it looked into. I do have a call out to, uh, Maryland Historical Trust, uh, to see what their thoughts, thoughts are on this. So, please consider this when you're, uh, moving forward. I, I do support, uh, the grant, I, I hope that goes through. I don't want to see the woods cut down, and, uh, I have some other thoughts on, on the, um, on the area that's now farmed. Monarch butterflies come to mind, but, uh, I may have more to say about that in the future. Thank you very much for your time, and I have one, two, three, four, five copies of this, and-
And we're making additional copies.
And more out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Who do I give these to, you?
You can give them to me.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other public comments?
Yes, my name is Joseph Chisholm, I'm a Wycomico County resident. I'm kinda nervous, it's the first time me being here. Uh, but I do have a serious concern, uh, about Perrin Gate's barbershop. I live across the street from this business, and what I see, I see drug activity, um, gambling, shooting dice, um, urination on the property. I spoke with the owner of the property several times. Uh, him and I got a little altercation. He, he says to me, there's nothing he can do. And I come into y'all, uh, this morning to urge you to do something about this property. I called the sheriff department numerous of times to have me, they know my voice. I'm just tired of the activity. Uh, yesterday, I was off from work, I took off today to do this. Uh, there was a couple of guys just urinating, you know, publicly. You know, this is crazy, you know, and I just want something to do about this. Uh, maybe y'all can do something as a councilman about this. Uh, I'm just tired of the drug activity. Sometimes be twenty, thirty people come up and just buy drugs and leave. Um, and I'm just, I'm just tired. Thank you.
Mr. Chisholm, first of all, we appreciate you being here and bringing this to our attention. What was the address that you stated?
Uh, I think it's six oh eight West Road. Yes.
It's the intersection of West Road and, um, Booth Street.
Yes, and I stay right across the street, on Corner Street, right across the street.
Down the street from there. I've seen the same.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Norris Howard Senior, and I, um, I'm a resident of Wycomico County for the last sixty years. I was born and raised in Chrisfield, the suburb of Chrisfield, referred locally as the Downneckers. And I'm here to speak on this Pirate's Wharf project that, uh, has been brought to my attention. I first learned about this from, um, Mr. Don Ross, um, several months ago when we were doing a, some Native American demonstrations up at, uh, near Vienna at, uh, the Hansel Restoration Project, an area that we refer to as Chacon. And, uh, he later supplied me with a, with an assessment that was done by Dr. Edward Otter. And I did review that some months ago, and, um, learning about this, um, learning about the project being brought up today, I haven't had a chance to refresh my mind that much on when I reviewed it last. And up to this point, I have not had any experience of walking on this property or to, uh, make any personal observations of it. As I mentioned, I had, I was born and raised in, in the Chrisfield, Maryland area, Somerset County. Somerset County, as you all know, was a much larger area than, than it is today. It included what's now Wycomico, Worcester County. Worcester County was taken out of it in seventeen forty-two, and Wycomico was taken out of it, uh, out of Worcester and Somerset in eighteen sixty-seven. and Somerset in 1867. I represent the traditional descendants of the Pocamo, which include a number of bands, villages, and towns that extended all farther up to the Pocamo River in this area here. And my English ancestors were the first residents of the old Somerset, which extended, as you know, into even Sussex, current Sussex County, Delaware. In 1988, my past older brother organized the Remnant Bands of American Indians at Eastern Shore, which I still serve as president of that. So a little bit of background about myself and where my interest lies. I am a traditional, and by tradition, a descendant of the Pocamo people. The indigenous people, as we're referred to, they lived, hunted, and foraged eastern side of the Chesapeake Bay since millennia. As noted in the assessment by Dr. Otter, artifacts seen on the site indicated the presence of past occupation, Flint napping, et cetera, and a high potential for, of this, of the restoration of this property being on a burial site. He noted certain artifacts in the assessment. He also found that this site was synonymous with a site that had been found recently at Harbor Point, it's located in a setting similar to this, where there was Native American I feel that this assessment, while it's important, it leaves a number of questions about what needs to be looked at. Obviously, more information and data should be collected before any decisions are made that will affect the future use of the site. I don't know if this particular enterprise would fall under the, I'll use the acronym NAGPRA, which I think represents the Native American Graves and Repatriation Act, or Section 106 provisions. These acts were primarily for federally owned lands, but they do extend to other properties that have state, federal funding. I don't know whether this has also been brought before the Maryland Historic Trust. The state of Maryland has a state historic preservation officer that usually gets involved with properties that are sensitive as far as the Native American points that need to be looked at. So I just wanted to come today and introduce myself. I'm available for guidance, and our interest is to protect, or preserve the historical and historical and traditional assets that are available. So I thank you very much for taking my points and testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
If any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments?
My name is Gary Trace, I own some property in Parsleyburg, Wallston Switch area. My area of concern is, I'd like to bring it forward to council about the Beaver Dam branch. I own some property along the branch, along with my brother, and we continually have this problem of flooding on this property. Well, it wouldn't be too bad if it wasn't flooding, if it was just flooding the property, but we have a shop on that area that has some very valuable equipment in it, and every time it floods, it goes inside this shop, and we have to pick up all this equipment and all kinds of things, welders, milling machines, motors, number of different things. Every time we turn around, it's a continuing problem, and this problem has been arising for a number of years now, but it's, of course, as of Michael, it's got pretty bad again. Well, two or three times for that, it did the same thing. Well, I've contacted the ditch association, and they've assured me some of this area, this ditch, will be cleaned out. But we also have another problem that nobody seems to want to address. There's some culverts on Route 346 and the Wallston Switch Road area. Well, these culverts have been put in there a number of years ago. And years ago, I had a meeting with Raj Shomra, when he was up here, and he concluded that he needed some more culverts in there. Well, he put one more culvert in there, if I remember correctly, and that's not enough to control this ditch over flooding and going over across into the other ditch areas. Well, those culverts need to be changed. I mean, it's, nobody pays attention to it, but I do, because I keep getting flooded every time. I've taken some pictures here to show if anybody would like to look at them. But also, on the other hand, I've had meetings with, well, Lee Outen, the engineer for the county, and some other public officials. Everybody sees the problem, but nobody seems to be able to do anything about it. But the other side of this ditch needs to be cleaned out by somebody to prevent these problems from happening. It's a continuing problem, but if anybody would like to look at these pictures, that's fine. Is that okay, or pass them around, or what?
If you were giving them to Mrs. Hurley, then she could make copies for the council to review.
Sure.
And if you have any statements you'd like to give her as well, then we could, you
Well, that's basically what I got to say, and I would like somebody to consider this.
We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
We'll certainly review this, and it's part of our comprehensive overview of the Stormwater Management throughout the entire county.
Okay.
Mr. Baker has been working very diligently to try to come up with a game plan throughout the entire county, and we did have meetings in each quadrant.
Is he the engineer, Mr. Baker?
He's right to your right.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay. But we, thank you for putting it on the radar, and we'll certainly make sure we include that when we have our discussions on a regular basis with Mr. Baker.
I appreciate your concern.
And we are going to be speaking with some folks from the state level about the tax ditches next, I think. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments?
Just asking Mrs. Chizum some concern, the sheriff is aware of the problem over there, and he is doing stuff. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's going to take time. He's been working on it. It's going to take time. It's not the owner's fault of the barber shop, it's just that he's just been a victim, just like you are. So, like I said, the sheriff's well aware of it, he's taking steps, it's going to take care of it.
I know that's been an ongoing problem for a number of years.
Oh, it's been going on, I was in the police.
Any other comments? Seeing none. I obtain a motion to adjourn from legislative session going into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the local government article, Section 3-305 B1 and 7, as follows, that discuss a personnel matter to protect the confidentiality of the individuals to consult with legal counsel to protect attorney-client privilege, and administrative closed session pursuant to Section 3-104 to discuss the county internal audit project updates.
Can I move?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion's carried, meeting is adjourned. First item on the open work session is the drainage tax ditches. Karen Hoy, Maryland Department of Agriculture, and Mr. Dallas Baker, Public Works.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county.
I'm Dave Myster with Maryland Department of Agriculture, I'm the regional coordinator.
I'm Karen Hoy, the Public Drainage Association's coordinator.
Thanks for being here.
So this, I asked the Department of Agriculture to come out and then talk to the council about tax ditch or Public Drainage Association, PDAs, formation. As you know, we've been dealing with drainage throughout the county, and one of the areas that is somewhat difficult to address is when we see ditches and swales that eventually drain through a private farm field, in through some woods, and kind of meander, and then make their way to whatever their discharge point is. Once they leave the county right of way, there's a, it's a challenge to maintain them and keep them open. One of the suggestions that had been raised through, or actually several suggestions that had been raised through those public outreach meetings that President Cannon was speaking about, was the formation of new tax ditches to get these areas cleaned out. So again, we had asked the Department of Agriculture to come and explain the process of setting up new PDAs, was it possible? There had been some conflicting reports about, oh, no, we don't do that anymore, or we do do that, and so it's, just asked them to come in and talk. Thank you very much for being here.
You're certainly welcome. So I'm going to cover that part of this discussion. I think all of you have in front of you a summary of steps in the organization of a PDA. This information comes from the Maryland Drainage Law, Article 25, and also from the Revised Title 26, Antitated Code of Maryland. Now, I don't know whether you want me to read through this entirely, I'm sure you all can do that. What I thought, I'd try to summarize some of these points, and I will start by saying that we've taken this information from the code before the county were to start into any process. I'm sure the county would use county attorney or whatever to follow this process, but this is more or less just what we've pulled from the code and what's required. We, certainly, tax ditch associations can be formed, that's not an issue. The, I think the issue is the process that has to be followed according to the code in order to establish the tax ditch association. And so as we move down this summary, the first thing that has to occur is the watershed itself, either the members, you know, the residents in the watershed, or whether it's a third of the landowners, or a third of the land owned, has to basically sign a petition saying they have a problem. So it starts within the watershed itself, and that is filed with the council. There's a summary of what the issue is, and a proposal of how to address that issue, and that starts the process. And of course, there's public hearing involved in the early process, early phases of this, but eventually the county then decides, the council decides whether or not to start, you know, to form a tax ditch association. And if they do that, once that's been approved by the council, then a board of managers is appointed to start this process, and then they get into the technical aspect of the problem. So, I'm sorry, I thought you were interrupting me.
Oh, whoa.
Okay.
Sorry. Because I wanted to ask you at the very beginning, when they talk about the petition coming from one-third of, you know, the area. It seems, I always wondered how this developed, because I don't think many of us are very familiar with this, this was done a long time ago, I don't think we've ever done it in years.
Right.
But how did you begin a petition process where your, the petition, the end game is to impose a tax on themselves? I'm wondering, how are you going to get, because, you know, at the very initial stage, they don't know what they're obligating themselves to, and to say, oh, I'm going to start a petition, next thing I know, I'm going to be spending a hundred dollars a month on taxes. Is there a clarification process before the petition starts?
There, it's not before it starts, but it's at the public hearing. So at that first public hearing, there needs to be a discussion about what's going to, what the burden will be on the residents, and there's two, there's actually two things. Not only is there a maintenance fee to maintain the system once it's established, but there's also the cost of constructing the system. Now, there is a provision that the county can supplement that, but that's money from the county that's being used. So there's two things that take place. There's the cost of constructing the system, and then there's a maintenance fee that's assessed annually after that, to maintain the system.
Yeah. Back in the early eighties, late seventies, early eighties, the Horse Bridge Tax Ditch was formed. I was not involved in it because my land didn't get put in it, but my neighbors did. And like the gentleman said, you know, that everybody got, I shouldn't say everybody got together, because they didn't, it became quite heated. I mean, it's a pretty dramatic event when this thing takes place. A lot of discontent, I mean, neighbors really going at each other. It's a pretty tough thing to get started. Enough of the neighbors did get together to get, I guess, the third that was needed to put this thing into petition, but it's not easy to get done. It's, and it's very dramatic when that thing starts, it really is. I don't know how it would be, I guess you'd have to have a lot more people that were being affected by it for it not to be as bad as that was, but that was pretty bad when that happened.
I can see something happening very similar to how we address our urban service districts for street lighting. It starts off with a community petition to the council, and that is in effect a tax to that community, because they are now paying for deconstruction and operation of street lights, whereas this would just be the construction and maintenance of a tax ditch. If we were to outline certain, you know, they were talking about the drainage sheds, so let's just say Tyusken. If we went down there and outlined a drainage shed for Tyusken, and then had a public meeting to educate the folks there, similar to what we did with the earlier meetings, where we said, okay, look, this is the area we're looking at, here is an option that we have to help address these issues, educate the public, and then see if that's something that they wanted to pursue.
Matt?
The way you get this petition to be successful is you go out after a seven-inch hurricane that comes. Everybody's affected at that time.
You know, reading this, reading this, and this is for Paul and Bob to address, this is another portion of our, where did this come from, our code? Where does this?
What I'm providing is from the Maryland Antitated Code.
Antitated Code, well, it needs to be changed, because we have a county executive now, and none of this has county executive in it, so somewhere along the line, this has to be addressed. We keep running up on different things, even though it's been since 2006, we seem to be discovering things that, this is just the council, where it needs to include council and the executive, so. Yeah, you're right, Matt, that's how you wait until after a seven-inch rain.
Larry, did you come?
Yeah, I thought at one time the county council was given regular updates on the tax ditch association.
I'm not sure how it works here, and how it has worked here, that's usually a local function, and it may be from our, from your predecessor, Dick Parsons, when he worked for us, may have addressed his body regularly, and that is certainly something that can be done. On an annual basis, the tax rule should be presented to the council, and you all do approve the boards of managers for each tax ditch association.
We do that, yeah.
So that would be an excellent time for someone to come in and address, you know, your concerns on a regular basis.
With the past four years, we really haven't heard from the tax ditch association, so some of us didn't realize it existed, and then we were getting a lot of questions from
And that's actually the case for the gentleman spoke at the public meeting, the hearing was.
Right. So, thank you for being here.
Sure.
The, I've got a different question. You know, after it's formed, after the managers are appointed, questions I'm getting from some constituencies, what governs the managers to make sure that the work gets done that needs to be done? Because what I'm hearing from some people is the ditches aren't getting cleaned out. They're not getting maintained as they should. Or where can the constituents turn to if they're not satisfied by what they hear from the managers? And these managers are volunteers, and I, you know, highly regard them, you know, in our, in our neighborhoods. But sometimes, they come to the county, and they say, hey, my ditch is not getting cleaned out, or I'm having flooding problems. I've been to the tax ditch, folks. So, is there an enforcement part of this code?
Let me address that two ways. One of them, the biggest limiting factor in work not being done is the amount of tax maintenance revenue they have to do the work. So, they have to make decisions on a budget for the work they can do, and some, and some are not collecting enough taxes. Or, as we've discussed, and we're gonna update you on today, the tax rolls have suffered, and we have, and they haven't been able to collect enough revenue, or whatever. So, so money is the big factor. As far as who to address it to, the tax ditches are actually local issues. They're, they're something that the council, that Wycomica County in this case, would address. So, if, if someone, like the gentleman that was just here, isn't being, isn't getting what they need from the tax ditch managers, I think it's appropriate to come to the county and raise the issue with the county. And certainly, we took note of what the gentleman just said about Beaver Dam, and we're gonna follow up on Beaver Dam ourselves with those managers, and to take a look at that situation, see what's going on there. But, but coming to the county, it's a local issue. So, it should come here.
We don't have any enforcement authority, do we?
I, I think you need to discuss that with the county attorney.
I'm looking at him.
The closest, the closest it seems to come is, in section nine, it says, upon approval of the report by the Wycomica County Council, the board of managers have the power to install, operate, and maintain the works of improvements describing the work plan. But it doesn't really say that the council itself can follow up afterwards. The, the closest thing that appears to have a follow-up is an appeal, and that's to the circuit court.
Right. And that, that deals with formation. And I'm not sure unqualified to answer the question. I think that's the question for the county.
This isn't a, a big problem, and, and, you know, when you get folks on the, the upper ends of this, well, say, like in area, we have Kilburne, that drains into Horse Bridge. Those folks really don't wanna pay anything, because they don't think it really matters to them. You know, the folks, it's draining their farmland, you know, they know how valuable it is. But, but then, when you get somebody in a neighborhood, or on, on a small portion of a lot, and their property house gets flooded, you know, suddenly they discover that they are on this ditch, and they think that their problems aren't being taken care of. So, they need somewhere to go, and I don't see where the county, where this addresses that the county has any authority.
Mr. Wilber, can you expand on that at all, with your experience?
I think.
Mr. Wilber's a county attorney.
Yes. Is a big entity.
That's where the complaints go. They are the ones that have the budget. And I think, as you alluded to when it started, it's hard for people to say, I want something created where you're going to tax me.
Right.
Yeah.
But as far as to answer Joe, Joe's question, once it's established, what, where is the county, or the executive, the county's role, the council's role in oversight?
Yeah. I, I can certainly check into that, but I believe it's at the board of managers. That's where the control is on the tax ditch.
And, and I guess every year, we could replace. I mean, if there's a board of managers that is not doing their job, I mean, it's our, every year, we appoint them. So, we could appoint different ones. I'm not, you know.
Trouble is finding people that wanna do it.
Yeah.
That's the big, that's the big issue.
I guess if there's someone who's got a concern, they're highly motivated to be active.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Taylor?
Not, not on this particular point, but to the extent that we're also talking about these flooding situations that are occurring generally, primarily in subdivisions, I, I'm just wondering if the tax ditch idea even makes sense. Because who's, you're gonna have to condemn the ditch probably to go through some small homeowner's land, and that's not gonna be popular. Plus, the cost. And I'm just wondering if either, there is a provision in the local government article for what they call stormwater associations, which are a little different than tax ditch associations, whether that might be a better way of, of these problems that we're addressing, not, not, not in farmland now, but in, primarily in subdivisions. And I'm wondering if, because of the difficulty of, of forming any of these associations, whether a particular tax district might not even be a better means to do it. Because I don't think that requires as much consent of the people within the district.
I, I think.
So, I mean, these are just kind of overview comments that I'm making.
I, I think what, in, in earlier conversations, we had specifically two residentials like Kilburne, was developing those as urban service districts, where, you know, we, they all put it in some money if they're interested in, again, it starts the same way. They get streetlights, sign a petition. We go and develop costs for cleaning out their ditches, and then putting that back to them, and letting them know how much it's gonna cost, and spread out over X number of years. I, I agree, tax ditches, I don't think are the answer to residentials. But again, this is more for those areas where, okay, you know, we're, we're out in the middle of areas that don't have subdivisions, but clearly there's a ditch that drains, and it drains off of a county right of way, through farm fields, through woods, and how do we get in there and maintain those areas?
Just maybe a comment on that. You're right, Dallas. I mean, the, the purpose of tax ditches, as I understand it, the original purpose was to make agricultural land more productive. And what's happened is, some of the agricultural areas have become, of course, developed.
Right.
So, there, and that's, I think, the nexus of the problem that the gentleman mentioned earlier with the tax ditches. And that's a little different from the flooding and, and what are.
And you were saying that, as opposed to tax ditches, what was the alternative?
Well, I think you could do a tax district. And I don't, I'm not familiar personally where I can comment on all the p's and q's of that, but I think that can be done without having to get as much consent of the people within the district. That that's a possibility. I mean, I think it's worth looking at that.
So, if I might comment just a little further on that. On the last page of this handout is the list of the tax ditches in the county, and when they were developed, going back to nineteen forty-six, for green branch PDA. Reason I bring that up, to your point, Mr. Taylor, is that they were, the purpose originally was for agricultural drainage, but they've become part of the infrastructure. And now, more and more types, different types of land uses are depending on these systems. And at the bottom of that page, the very last comment's the most important thing. Because they are taxed, PDA tax ditches, they're designed on what's called C curve or agricultural drainage, meaning you're only designing them to remove two inches of rainfall in a twenty-four hour period. Well, Michael just dunked about seven inches on the west side of the county in, in four or five hours. And no matter what you design, you know, in that situation for a tax ditch, it can't carry that kind of water. And we've had, the frequency of our storm events has been greater and greater the last several years, calling more attention to this. So, the tax ditch itself's probably not gonna be the way to address the, you know, the way they'd be designed.
I just read that. I was, I was shocked to read that.
Yeah, a lot of folks don't know that.
There's not a lot of rain, really.
No, it's not.
Not compared to what we've been having lately.
Sure. Which is what we're trying to address.
It is, getting an education here myself. Is it possible to revise those standards for specific drainage sheds? If we said, okay, we wanna establish a new PDA, could we, say, specify what that new design standard would be?
I, I don't know that the, the annotated code actually specifies what it has to be done on. That is what the standard or the specs that were used from the USDA when they designed this stuff originally, that's what they were using. So, it's not to say that you couldn't design something larger. I think the problem with that then is, where's the cost go?
Right.
It began to become cost prohibitive on doing stuff like that. And again, remembering that, at least in the tax ditch association, the landowner has to bear the cost of the construction, sharing that cost, and then the maintenance to maintain something much larger than we're already, you know, trying to maintain. That cost would be higher as well.
It, it's the same thing that we're facing on the residential side, where right now, you know, our system's designed for two- and ten-year storms, and, you know, a fifteen-inch pipe or an eighteen-inch pipe will suffice. But for these larger storms, that we're talking about, having our systems designed to twenty-five or a hundred-year storms, now we're looking at twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight inch pipes. And that cost gets passed on to the developers and to the, the homeowners.
It's better than the alternative.
Yeah.
It's better than them calling us afterwards and say, hey, what's going on? My basement's flooded.
I, I agree completely. I agree.
The only thing is, I've been in soil conservation now. I feel like an old man, but for thirty years, everybody has a drainage problem until you put the cost in front of them. And then the drainage problem goes away, at least temporarily. So, it's, cost has a lot to do with.
Didn't soil conservation used to do this? Didn't they used to focus, and they used to take care of the ditches?
There were actually watershed programs back, way back in the day, before my time, where they did all the survey and laid all this stuff out. NRCS has changed considerably since then, and they do not have the resources to do this anymore, as does, Maryland Department of Agriculture does not have those resources either. So, the cost of actually doing the study, the, you know, the survey and stuff, is another cost associated with this, along with the construction. So.
Well, you know, I think it may be the only solution for, for the state. Because, I mean, we, I think it's very obvious, this is a statewide problem, not just a problem in Wycomica County. And when you go in to look at these ditches, look at how many people now. It, it used to be much simpler. But nowadays, if we're gonna go in and do anything to a ditch, it's gonna be DNR, it's gonna be MDE, it's gonna be Department of Agriculture. There's so many state agencies that now have to have a part of it, that I don't, I would sug, I would think that the state might be inclined to review this as a state matter, where they would control all the aspects of it, and do so for the benefit of the county, even if it's cost sharing.
It may be something to look into, and, and I'm glad you said that about cost sharing. Over the years.
I don't take that too little.
No, no. Over the years, no, I wanna give you historical perspective. Over the years, there was cost share funding that came from the state to help with maintenance of these systems. And the local jurisdictions also provided cost share assistance. To my knowledge, only Worcester County now is providing any cost share assistance, and it's limited to what they're providing to their tax ditch associations. The state funding went away years ago, and, and the program has dwindled. And, and I think we all know that in, in the current environment, drainage is not a good thing. It's not viewed as a positive thing. When we, we look at the bay and trying to protect the bay, and certainly from agricultural runoff, the idea of having drainage and, and off of farmland directly into the bay, without a lot of best management practices and things to help reduce the nitrate, the nutrient inputs, is certainly, you know, we have to be very conscious of that. The times have changed. And so, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how the state would receive a request to take on a drainage program.
That gives me a little bit of heartburn, because I think of two years ago, when the federal government tried to classify all their ditches as blue water streams, where they were gonna have to follow all their federal guidelines. I don't know if we really wanna give up our control of our ditches.
Yep.
I'd like to keep that local. I like the funding part.
That's a good point, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
I'll ask this of Paul. So, Paul, when you have a citizen that's not having any luck with the PDA managers, what's his next step?
Well, he could start a movement to replace the PDA managers with a different set.
I see. Okay.
Now, are these managers appointed by the county executive?
No.
Well, I think as Joe said, that's not even in, it's not even in here now.
Right.
Has to be updated.
So, who would do that?
Well, we do. We confirm them every year.
Because it's not in there.
We confirm them, we've done it every year since I've been here.
Where do the names come from?
The names come from the county executive's office.
That's what I thought.
Well, they do come from PDA. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they, they're voted on at their, each PDA has to have an annual meeting.
And it's tough to find people to do it.
Yes.
I mean, it really is.
And so, they're voted on in the annual, annual meeting, and they're on three-year rotating terms.
Right.
So, the board never turns over. It's, it's one each year.
Staggered.
It's quite staggering. So, so they're voted on at the annual meeting, and then they're brought before the council for approval.
Now, we have to go to our legislators, introduce legislation to have this statute changed. I'm assuming we will.
I, that's a question from Mr. Wilber.
If, if they're finding that they don't have enough funds to, to, to do the work that citizens want them to do, do they have that ability to increase what they're charging themselves, or do they have to bring those charges in front of the council to, to get approval before they're increased?
They have the authority to levy the tax themselves. And as we talked about last year, when we talked about this, the, the review of the tax rolls, a first step was to review and update the tax rolls to make sure that all of the original properties that were included in, in the tax ditch association were being taxed, to see if that made a difference in the revenues. And if that wasn't enough, then the next step would be to, to possibly raise the tax revenues. And each one does that separately. That's not an across-the-board thing. Each association decides how they wanna do that.
Yeah, but the council approves the rates, don't we? Don't we approve rates per, for farm, you know, fields?
Probably.
Yeah. The ratio, yeah, that ratio, there's a ratio between the amount of cropland and amount of woodland.
Yeah, but then.
That's, remains fixed, as from the viewers' report. But the actual fee per acre then is approved here.
It's approved by us.
That's what I'm saying.
Are you familiar with any counties that have transitioned to maybe a more productive method, more efficient method?
No, I, all of the counties actually struggle with this.
Still following the same.
Still, it's all following the same. Yeah. We have, I think, six counties on the shore with tax ditches.
I know, I know, there's been a, some meetings. Is there a significant amount of revenue that's gonna be raised from this, these properties that are being included that haven't been?
Some are getting a significant amount back. Most of them are not.
Who?
I'm sorry.
You said especially who?
No, I said some are not.
Oh, some are not. I'm, I'm sorry.
Um, just to give you an example, Beaver Dam, they increased their parcels by sixteen percent, almost seventeen, which is giving them an increase of eight hundred twenty-five dollars, forty-four cents a year. Doesn't sound like much. Their collections usually average on the year of six thousand ninety-seven. That was as of October two thousand, excuse me, seventeen. So, when you say eight hundred dollars, that might be a tile to install, you know. Here's another one, Hit of Creek. It's rather small. They're just getting fifty dollars back.
Yeah.
A year.
So, you say Beaver Dam will be getting an increase of eight hundred dollars a year?
Correct. Eight hundred thirty-five.
Over six, from six thousand to sixty-eight hundred, something like that. So, yeah.
And I think that, you know, in all, and just, I'm thinking specifically of one tax ditch association we worked with earlier this year, who for a while didn't collect a tax. And their theory was, we're not doing any maintenance. Things are in good shape, so we won't collect a maintenance fee. But in the end, they had a situation where they needed to do some work, and didn't have enough funds to do it. And so, we had a conversation with them about the need to do this every year, and plan for, you know, plan for what you don't expect. And, and so, I think they're trying to do their best, and they're, they're like you all. They don't wanna raise taxes either. But I think at some point, they're gonna have to, you know, face that situation, and make some tough decisions.
Twenty years ago, thirty years ago is a hundred dollars an hour to run a bulldozer. Now, it's two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So, there's, there's where you run into, the issues that gets away from them. The cost of doing business gets away from them.
Right.
Well, if they've got, if some of these tax ditches do have funds building, and we go back to this, where it says two inches of rain for twenty-four hour period, if some of these tax ditches do have monies available, would it not be good for them to increase, to change that, that ratio there a little bit, if they could?
You mean to increase the capacity?
Right, right.
Well, the funny part of that is, it's kinda happening naturally anyway. We tend to find that, and if you look at an ASBIL from a system that was done back in the sixties, for instance, you were to go back and survey that system today, it's scoured and undercut. The banks have eroded. So, we actually have greater capacity now than we had when it was originally, you know, installed. So, obviously, we'll carry a heavier rainfall event, but it's still not carrying the frequency of the storms we've had in recent years. So, we do have situations where that's a problem. You know, they, they've actually eroded to a point that they're, you know, they're getting tough to manage.
So, are the associations allowed to collect that maintenance fee and put it in their reserve fund if they don't use it that year?
Absolutely. They do that, and the county treasurer maintains the fees. They collect the fees for the tax ditch association.
It's an itemized list on your county bill, and it goes specifically to each PDA account. Nobody can touch it, except for when the manager submit a bill to the treasurer's office.
So, each year, they should be collecting that anyway?
Yes.
It seems to me that we should probably have a work session with the managers, I would believe, to see exactly, you know, if the, even, to find out even if their association is intact, how much fun, how much they have in reserves, and what their goals are. Wouldn't you think that would be a good process?
We, we.
would believe, to see exactly, you know, if the, even, to find out even if their association is intact, how much fun, how much they have in reserves, and what their goals are. Wouldn't you think that would be a good process?
We, we have that information. First of all, the information about what their accounts are should be available with the county treasurer's office.
That's where I get it from.
Okay, great.
So, that should be available to you. The second thing is, Karen does an annual operation and maintenance plan. After each, each meeting, she puts together a list of the work they plan to do for the previous year, two, three years out, correct?
At least a year, yes.
Yeah, right. So, so we have that information about their goals, you know.
That would be very helpful, and maybe, are you getting that from the county as well? This is, surprisingly, it's unexplored territory for us.
I personally create the plan from the information that comes from those annual meetings, from what the managers decide they want to do.